...the room so everybody kinda knows who's who and what's what.
Sure. Well, good evening, Mr. President, fellow members. Appreciate the opportunity for coming out tonight to talk about the Whitcomb Corridor. My name is Bob Saini. I'm with Robinson Engineering Project Manager.
I'm John Hilson with Robinson Engineering as well.
Randy?
Randy Hall with Hallmark Development and Luxor Homes.
Ms. Hardaway?
Keisha Hardaway, Councilwoman.
Sean Bedditt, Councilman and President of the RDC.
Hi, everyone. I think they all know me.
But you should say your name anyway for the record.
You're making Craig record this.
Exactly.
Hi, I'm Rick Bella and I was born at a very young age.
Do you remember it all?
This used to be Rick's ward.
Yes.
And I'm Angie Chilgat, Economic Development Director.
Steve O.
Steve Kaden, I'm here.
Thanks for coming.
Tristan?
Hello, everyone. I am Michael Griffin, the interim town manager. Interim town manager.
Stop stressing that, Mr. Griffin.
That is actually the street and engineering director. He is the town council president, albeit born at a young age. And this, if I may please, is Joe Angardiola. Who is the administrative assistant in redevelopment department, or this is the economic development department. And I'll be seated now.
He just learned how to say your name, that's why he did it.
Tristan?
Hi, Tristan.
I'm sorry, Tristan.
All right, Bob, floor is yours.
All right.
Now that we know everybody.
Again, thank you. So, we're here tonight to talk about the Whitcomb Street Corridor study that we've taken underway. We did an initial study. The town has had a lot of great developments. With developments, there's traffic congestion that we have to deal with. And right now, at 91st and Chase, there's an imminent need for something to be done at that three-way. Because when Lake County gets out, that thing is backed up all the way to the other roundabout. Some of the other locations too, as we go north, is 89th Avenue. We've got a couple of sharp curves there. And I know when Mr. Hall's development came into play with Liberty Estates, there's concerns on safety with regards to those sharp curves. And I think there's been some accidents and cars going off the road. So, we're looking at that as well. And then, as we travel north, we're looking at potentially another roundabout at the entrance to possibly Phase Six there for Liberty Estates. So, as we've gone through this, we're looking at alternative traffic routes for the town of Maryville and the region. So, with that said, I'm gonna turn this over to John Hilson. He's our expert traffic engineer with Robinson Engineering to discuss this in more detail. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening. So, as Bob mentioned, yeah, we've been looking at this project area, which is essentially bound by 91st Street at the south and then Liberty Estates up at the north. This is an overall view. And kinda came up with three different concepts for the area. One of them being an intersection improvement at the south at 91st and Chase. Another one, an intersection at the entrance to Liberty Estates, Phase Six. And then also softening these curves through where Whitcomb and Chase and 86th Street. So, I'm gonna start at the south end. So, on screen here is the intersection of 91st and Chase Street. To date, we have done traffic counts for the area. We got projections from NERPC as well for both 2040 and 2050. So, we've looked at a couple of different concepts for the intersection at 91st and Chase. One being, you know, leave it in its existing configuration. So, no change in geometry. Leave it as a always stop control intersection. And the existing conditions, in the evening, it's already, you know, level service D, essentially getting close to failing operation, right? So, and proposed in 2040 or 2050, this intersection will be failing if nothing's done, it's left as a stop sign. So, we looked at an option of, you know, keeping it in that geometric shape, but adding a traffic signal. And if we did that with or without turn lane, without turn lanes, it's gonna be level service D. If we do something with turn lanes in that configuration, it would be level service B or C. So, it'd be serviceable, but not necessarily a great configuration. And as you know, most of the traffic in this area is actually going east to west essentially, right? Going down 93rd and then coming up Chase and going west. So, the thought is to do an intersection improvement here that actually turns the geometrics. So, as you look on this, so that it becomes the biggest traffic movement, it becomes a through movement as opposed to a turn, right? So, we looked at options to do just a traffic signal with turn lanes there, which would function well. But then you've got an existing roundabout coming into a traffic signal. So, we also looked at an additional roundabout and found that that actually operated the best in the 2040 or 2050. So, the current preferred recommendation for this intersection is to rehab it, create a roundabout. There would be right-of-way acquisition required for that, which would involve, you know, purchasing land from this parcel right here, which is just west of the courthouse. Potential improvement cost for an intersection there would probably be in the around with two and a half to three million bucks to construct that improvement. Is that all?
Got your checkbook, Randy?
No.
John, two to three million, you said?
Somewhere in that ballpark. I mean, at this time, we've only done, you know, conceptual level geometrics and traffic operations. So, there's no detailed engineering completed to date.
But it's just a single lane, right, John?
Exactly, single lane, yep.
I'm smiling at Trista because I've heard Michael are gonna...
So, John, I got a question. So, if we chose right off the bat not to go with, not to spend the three million dollars, what are we looking at for a little bit of widening, a little bit of widening, putting up a signal? How long will that buy us for cars? A level B service, how long will that get us?
So, you're saying like, do not reconfigure the intersection?
I'm just wondering, when you mentioned the signal with turn lanes and stops and putting a signal up, would we get that?
Right, a traffic signal would...
Would that, if we had a level B service, as you said, how long will that buy us? Will that buy us 10 years?
So, if we left it in the existing configuration as a T intersection, didn't pull the intersection out into this field to the southwest, we'd be looking at level service, if we didn't, if we put in turn lanes, it'd be maybe level service C plus or minus?
C.
Yeah, in 2040, 2050.
What would that run, the price of the signal, John, it's probably what, quarter of a million?
I mean, a signal itself can cost 250,000 to 300,000 plus widening. You'd still be, you know, well over a million dollar improvement cost with widening the existing pavement and putting in traffic signals there. And then if you reconfigured it, you know, out here, you might be in the, you know, two million dollar.
And again, John, the roundabout puts us at a level of service what?
A is what it projected.
Okay.
And even just straightening out that intersection to make that a through movement becomes a level A, B.
Right.
With a traffic signal as opposed to a roundabout. It was just a thought is, you're coming out of a roundabout and into a traffic signal. Might as well just have two roundabouts.
Which I wanna turn to, I wanna ask Rick a question, because again, this used to be his ward. But Rick, what would you estimate Marion Woods and Bridgewood and Teal Crossing, what's a ballpark of residents? Number of residents out, homes out there, would you think?
Oh, it's probably, almost eight hundred.
Eight hundred. So, even without Randy's development at Liberty Estates way to the north, this is taking traffic, Keisha, to the west to those three subdivisions. One's a duplex development, Teal Crossing, and then Bridgewood and Marion Woods are larger homes, I guess you'd call them.
Marion Wood is not that large, but Bridgewood's.
Bridgewood's pretty good size, isn't it?
Yeah.
And I guess just for a frame of reference, existing traffic counts were saying traffic along 91st or 93rd was about six to seven thousand vehicles a day.
Uh-huh.
And they were projecting that out to 10,000 to 11,000 vehicles a day come 2040 or 2050.
Right.
But NERPC's model only knows what it knows too. You know, it makes assumptions for growth. It doesn't necessarily know everything that's going on at Liberty Estates in this area as well.
Right.
So, that's the first...
Nothing changes, right, John?
Right.
That's if, yeah, okay.
So, right, exactly. It can grow faster than that too. I mean, the traffic projections that they were putting in there were in the one to three percent range, which are pretty typical traffic growth assumptions.
Yeah.
So, that was what I'll call one of the three improvement projects was an intersection improvement here. The next one that we looked at was softening of these curves. So, this is the area essentially in between those two intersections. You have really tight curves on 89th Street as it turns into Whitcomb and as it turns into Chase. Existing condition, those curves are 50 to 60-foot radiuses, which give you essentially, you know, 15 to 20 mile an hour design speed as you go around them. So, we looked at some concepts. This would be, say, the most conservative concept with, you know, the most sweeping curves. Putting it out at, you know, curves in the 500 to 700-foot radius range, which would get you design speeds in the 40 to 45 miles an hour design speed. Not that we'd be encouraging traffic to drive faster in this area, but the bottom line is you would have nice sightlines if you did a concept something like this. I see one of the main concerns, you do have a house, I don't know if you can see my mouse on the screen here. But there is a house right here. So, I think the final alignment, as we, you know, go a little bit further and try to talk about right, because there's obviously right-of-way acquisition required for, you know, this concept. You might see this curve get a little bit tighter to try and keep some of the improvement away from, you know, this building here. But the overall concept here is create an intersection that would eventually serve, I forget what phase this is of a future Liberty Estates, like eight or 10, or whatever that number is. And soften these curves so that way traffic traveling north and south through this corridor has, you know, safer traveling conditions. And then the last concept that we looked at...
Back up to John, do you guys have a cost estimate on this phase, or is this coupled with something else?
I did write something down here. What did I say?
Trista needs a number.
So, between the west curve, the tangent, you're looking at probably one and a half.
Million, one to two million bucks, probably by the time it's all said and done with right-of-way acquisition. And depending if this is total recon for the entire limits, or if it's just total recon for the curves and then widen overlay for tangent segments.
All right. So, on the high end, we're already up to five million?
Yep.
Estimated.
Estimated.
That's the high end, yeah.
That is the high end.
Not to exceed cost, Mr. King.
I mean, I don't know.
Are there any other questions on, in this area of the project?
Keisha, do you have any questions? This is somewhat new to you, I know.
It is. No, I'm looking at it and it's interesting.
So, John, just a quick question. For this area right there, are we looking at a three-lane road?
No, this was gonna be a two-lane facility, one lane in each direction with shoulders.
Okay.
It wouldn't change until we got to the second roundabout, right?
Yeah, I guess that's all dependent on, you know, a finalized traffic impact study. And I could talk about that here in a second. Going up to this north section. So, this is Liberty Estates, which obviously the plans have already been prepared and submitted to the town for review. I don't think, the area has not been planted yet. And we had had some conversations with Mr. Hall regarding his desire. He has property west of Whitcomb, which he's looking to, you know, potentially develop here in the not-too-distant future as well. So, when we first put this plan together that you're looking on the screen, we were really thinking about trying to tie the south leg of Whitcomb in and tie into Liberty Estates as it was currently, you know, had been submitted. Well, we've had previous, or some additional discussions, and there's thoughts now trying to shift this roundabout or this intersection a little bit further north, so that way we could have a west leg that comes out to serve potentially, you know, the development to the west here. And then the question would be, if this area to the west, coming back to this overall view, if this became a leg coming out to the west, I don't know if you can see my cursor there on the screen.
Yeah.
You know, it's kinda small. But would there, depending on how this area was developed, would Whitcomb still have to tie into this intersection? Or could it become internal, you know, tie into the subdivision and they come out here and then eventually come out to 91st Street as the area to the south develops? So, the final location of this roundabout, I'd say, is still in progress as we coordinate with the development. But the goal is to come up with a concept that works for Liberty Estates, so that way that area can be planted and, you know, they can begin construction and that. And then also planning for the future, so that when the area to the west here develops, it's set up at a location that, you know, works for all developments.
I think last time we spoke, John, Randy, you were gonna do some checking to see if you can change the road configuration. Is that doable for your development, if we do adjust that roundabout to the north a bit?
We've actually had Teranga work with them a little bit.
Yeah, I saw some emails.
Kinda off the, you know, off the path. And I think Teranga is suggesting that the roundabout that you see be slid a little bit north.
Yeah, somewhere.
I don't have, unfortunately, I am not as slick as these gentlemen, but next time I will be.
So, not to the north, but follow the road as it is, a little bit toward the north?
I have some drawings that we could lay out that show if you take that cul-de-sac and slide it north just approximately where his cursor is.
Okay.
Then we would take an arm that kinda slides up and left into the farming area to the west. Yes.
And that doesn't, that doesn't impact your development?
It would allow, well, I'm gonna have to give up land to the east.
Right.
To make a roundabout work for the region, if you will. But I think what we give up to the east and southeast will more than be valuable to the town as a whole looking what we can bring on the west.
Okay.
So, I do have some concepts just to bounce off you. Again, I could probably even work from that diagram and describe them to you. That, I think that answers.
Thank you.
And then, I know you'd mentioned one lane versus two lane, you know, how that would look. And I'd say the final answer to if Whitcomb on the north going, you know, coming out north out of this roundabout is one or two lanes is gonna be dependent on a traffic impact study that's developed for, you know, this future development to the west. Right now, the traffic on Whitcomb was, what were they saying? Whitcomb south of 30 was in the, you know, 3,000, you know, 2,500 to, two to, yeah. Actually, they're saying it's only 1,500 vehicles a day and they were projecting it out to 2,500. I think that's probably a little bit low, but as you think of how many lanes you need for certain volumes of traffic, you know, two lanes can take, you know, up to about 7,000 to 10,000 is the high end where you wanna start considering more lanes. So, then like, a three-lane facility is good, very good from 5,000 to 12,000. You can get up to about 17,000 and it's fair. And once you start getting 17 to 20, you really wanna start considering like four lanes. So, I could see different options where potentially, you know, two lanes to the north or maybe a three-lane section to the north would function for this region based on the traffic volumes I've seen. You know, considering, you know, you're only 10,000, 11,000 on 91st Street. So, but depending on how, you know, what actually gets developed here and what the density is and the use, you know, that all has to be kinda plugged into a traffic impact study to determine the final need for cross-sections to the north.
Yeah, I would think that at least we'd need a center turn lane.
Yeah, like a three-lane section.
Sure. I mean, let's just think of the future a little bit here, you know, while we're doing it.
Yep.
Then we also talked about a right-turn lane as we approached 30, if I recall during our meeting. Is that correct? But that's a little bit to the north, or does that go all the way from your development, Randy, all the way up north?
So, that would be on Whitcomb?
Right.
So, the current plan without any expansion does have the developer pay for... Directly.
Okay.
An extension to a middle lane that allows for a right lane. But I think the stacking is still limited, meaning five-ish cars.
Okay, so it's just a small Q, all right.
As part of what I want to propose, that triangle that is actually owned by the highway. And I don't know if I, do you mind if I walk up to the screen?
Absolutely, sure, absolutely.
There's an interesting opportunity we've identified. And that is, if you see the typical right-of-way here, if you were to extend it, there's actually a parcel here that is well beyond what the highway should need. And that would be a great benefit to us and the town to be able to expand.
Okay.
So, we've already been in contact with State Highway directly, stating we think that this is a joint developer slash town interest to get the ball moving. The theory would be we would look to acquire the triangle. And then that would, especially if you're thinking about that third-lane road north, facilitate this.
Okay.
Who did you talk to that did that?
Oh, boy. Same people we worked on the original traffic study. Do you have names that... I don't think that's right. He's also working through Matt. He had some people there he was talking to, Reardon. But I was trying to, I'm trying to get, we've emailed, we have not spoken. I was trying to get a verbal meeting with a diagram the week after spring break. Spring break being for the kids next week. To just start, I can't believe that they need the property is the obvious fact. Okay, and if you don't need it, we believe that the town's plan, subject to this meeting and others, and in your interest. Just trying to just get ahead of the ball. And I think that would resolve quite a bit an alleviation if you go to three lanes. And then the other point on three lanes is you're gonna need a 50-foot right-of-way, right? So, I don't control this parcel, but everything south I do, and already committed previously. The east side will have it with my parcel. When we go back to the other side on the west side, I'll be able to donate also. So, really, and that is, so here, I am from here south. And of course, I don't, I don't know what our opportunity is here. Those buildings look tight. But we, you know, I don't, you know, again, the town, whether that's eminent domain or otherwise, we pick up some here. And then when you get, I can give up the east side, I'll be impacting myself this way, but I've already started planning. I'm putting in right now my entrance signage, I already pulled it back.
Okay.
To allow for the consideration of 50 feet that runs down this way. And then that roundabout falls in about here. Let's see, about here. So, we could also, commercial, it all has to come on the east side, it looks like, unless I'm wrong.
Now, that's to Steve and Bob, both sides of this area, north of Randy. One is BRS Industrial Park, which was developed by John Bach and Roy Radesky. And I don't know what they, in their plat, and then the kinda funky little road up there that Randy was talking about, the triangle with the state, that is, I think it's called Broad West. And I see Sheila in the back room. There used to be a Mylar. John Lox has subdivided that property years and years and years ago. And so, I'm assuming that's a recorded subdivision. I don't know what the right-of-way on east side looks like, guys, for Whitcomb. If they dedicated anything back in the day, Rick, or not. As part of the subdivision.
I can tell you our original right-of-way on, per curfew, is 30. So, I would assume that might have been...
What they, yeah.
You know, consistent what was to the north, but we're kinda playing.
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
That scales at about 60.
Yeah. Does our thoroughfare plan call for a wider right-of-way on Whitcomb? Do we know?
That I'm not sure.
We'd have to look that up.
If we can do it on the east, we control all the way down to what that roundabout would be if that's the direction you decided. We'd only have Loxes to deal with.
So, what's the estimate for the either four or five-point roundabout at the Liberty Estates entrance?
So, each one of those roundabouts, I would guesstimate right now at about two and a half to three million dollars, each one. Now, the one thing that we do need to coordinate as we look at this, this location here is there are NIPSCO pipelines running through the, along the path there that Randy was just talking about. So, we definitely, you know, avoid those pipelines at all costs, especially if you wanna keep costs down because they're on their own property, not in public right-of-way. So, any relocation costs would have to be borne by the town. And relocation pipeline, relocating pipelines is very expensive.
So, on the high end, John, the three different sheets you gave us, I jotted down, we're looking at three, three, and two.
Yeah, if you were to...
Give or take.
Sure.
An estimate.
Estimate. Planning level budget.
So, I guess, Keisha, for you and I, and I'll bring in Trista and Michael for this. You know, the town is a redevelopment district. We have allocation areas. So, we have the potential to do a redevelopment district bond issue. Now, they're both nodding their heads, but I don't know if they have other ideas on, again, Randy is willing to participate to a point. And what would we, I mean, is there other funding mechanisms between your two intelligent heads that you're thinking of besides just a regular redevelopment GO bond?
I don't know enough about the allocation area generation there to say. But I do think that we talked about this earlier and I still stand by my recommendation. And I think Trista agrees. We wanna try to conserve increment for pure redevelopment. Even though you've done a great job historically of publicly investing that, I think you're remarkable in that. You've had more public investment than private. That's impressive to me. The redevelopment bond is relatively straightforward. It's not, it's the least costly financing vehicle. No reserve requirement. It essentially, I don't know, the thing I can't tell you is how much capacity you have. I'm trying to get a handle on all of the debt that's outstanding as pledged to GO. But if you haven't issued anything against that district, it basically is 2% of one-third of your net AB, which will be a lot of swag.
All right, now, two things to keep in mind is, and I don't know how this goes into the capacity. And I don't know, Trista, if you can answer this, we need to get, bring Bob Swenson. We did two $10-million developer-backed bonds, one for Randy at Liberty Estates and one for the Monarch Project with Don Weiss. We get, as it says, we basically put our name on this, Keisha, as RDC. We get $100,000 off the top of the annual draw that Randy and/or Don gets off of their development. They keep the rest to retire the bonds that they basically finance. Is that in a nutshell, Randy?
I believe that's correct.
So, I don't know if that, if those two go against our capacity, Michael, because they're developer-backed.
The allocation area of debt is not, it's not even Article 13 debt under the Constitution. It's not special taxing district debt. As a matter of fact, unless you do everything you've said so soon, if you fail to do that, somehow the increment doesn't get developed, it doesn't even account against our quality of credit worthiness or our debt rating.
Correct.
And we just say, oh, well. Sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
That is a part of the public finance realm. So, that is not a consideration. We, and there's no interference between that process and the process you're talking about. We still would wanna make sure that we don't interfere with your ability to get, because our genuine goal is that you do get repaid. But there's no reason that your GO, special taxing district bond will interfere with that at all.
You can use as well the $100,000 that RDC captures as a pledge toward repayment of the special taxing...
The special taxing bond, yeah.
As primary or secondary. The property tax then could be pledged against a primary or secondary as well.
Okay.
The thing is too, we wouldn't have to necessarily do an $8-million issue at once because we talked about doing this in various stages. We have an immediate need at 91st Avenue, which would be the very first roundabout construction. So, there's a way that we can do these in different phases. Would that change how we finance it? Could we do a variety of...
In looking at the forecast of expected revenue coming in and how much you wanted to have pledged
Okay.
at one time versus reserved for other projects, it really becomes a cash flow.
Well, the other, the other thing I would say is devil's advocate though, Trista, is that we went through this before. And when Amerplex and the crossroads came in, we did a developer-backed bond because tax collections were very low at that time. And Amerplex Holiday took 7 million, we kept 3 million, but the interest rate that we were paying on that was extremely high. So, Bob had us refinance and pay that off. And we saved hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, interest rate, that would be my only concern, Rick, is if we try to divvy this thing up as opposed to taking a big bite at the apple at 8 million with a low interest rate now. If we wait and do Phase Two in three years or five years, what are our interest rates gonna be? We don't know.
Well, it could be either way.
It could be either way. It could be lower, it could be higher.
Well, the interest rates are a little higher than they have been. My prior bill of 30 years, I practically got free money all those years. You're not getting that now.
Yeah.
But the trend line is downward. Do you agree?
Over the last recent two years, yes.
Over the last, so, it's not common to do this. You do this more when you're doing an increment-backed or a revenue-backed bond. There's no reason why you couldn't authorize the full amount you want, but not sell it all at one. You could divide it in series.
Could we do a ban, Michael? We could probably do a ban.
Well, no. You don't do a ban. Let me say that differently. Yes, you could do a ban if you take all... Well, no. You don't do ban. Let me say that differently. Yes, you could do a ban if you take all the steps to doing that. I would not recommend a ban because you can simply say, we're gonna authorize up to whatever it is, eight million dollars, and then say, we're gonna authorize the first series to be whatever you want it to be less than that.
Okay.
Sell that first, then do the balance later.
Okay, gotcha.
There's.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of.
Marketing GO bonds is very, it's not difficult at all. And your credit, although I know that there was an enhancement that you got for one of them. For these things, your credit rating ought to be awfully good. Your tax base is robust.
Well, I would, I would advise my colleague to my, to my left here, Keisha, we will, as a, as a commission and as a council, too, with Rick, not only do we have this, you know, we have some other things that are, are on the table. And I've talked to Rick about having a finance, kind of a budget finance, like a list of what do we have? We have the Whitcomb Street corridor. We have the South Side Fire Station. We have the aerial, as you know, being on the fire territory board, the new aerial truck. We have the community center that we need to address. We also need to address Steve's paving list. And Robinson is working on the paving list, and how are we gonna pay for paving this year in the wards?
The new town center.
The new town center.
This has actually been a project that, that Trista and I have been talking about since I arrived. It's kind of twofold. What is a capital plan? We want exactly what you're talking about to be put into a Gantt chart, so we can kind of get a sense of timing and our capacity to fund it. And also, you can score it if you want to in terms of its importance. Because I also know you got a fire station you gotta finance, a fire truck, and some scuba gear, which I think we can finance more easily than some of the other things. Having said all that, we also want to get the department heads to give us their rolling stock because we would like to also have a Gantt chart on that. We just feel like we've got to see it all in one big picture so we can figure out the most, get a nexus tied to the useful life of those assets and to figure out what is the most rational way to pay for them. You still need all this public investment that you want to do.
Right. And you and I, Michael, talked about, you know, the fire station, we talked about a possible public safety bond of some type.
I think you can do it through the, we'll talk about that because there's a lot of cash in our capital fund, by the way. But I do believe that we can still do it with your building corporation.
Okay, all right. But this is kind of, as you said, Mike, this has kind of been the first one that came out because Randy, how many houses do you have out there now, Randy?
Built.
Built.
I have about forty townhomes and about fifteen single-family. Maybe, maybe twelve single-family.
And we have done in last year, was it last year or the year before, we approved multifamily out there where you were gonna do apartments and what was the other one? One was what, Red Bud?
So, Redwood is under construction. They should go vertical in sixty days of two-hundred retiree ranches. But we lost our apartment people when the market interest rates spiked and inflation spiked at the same time. So, they couldn't vet the budget. Budget actually was un-biddable. No one would bid. So, we're back to the market on that, which is, it's just deferred.
Okay. Margie, I see you hiding behind that board back there, dear. This is in the heart of your ward, so you might want to take your seat as president of the Plan Commission and take a look at some of these aerials that Robinson's put together.
Okay, Sean.
This is our, our RDC workshop, but it's your ward, so I want to make sure the ward council person is, or counselor.
You don't have Bridgewood anymore?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought so. He kept saying you don't.
No, he didn't.
You have Bridgewood?
See, I told you, he doesn't know.
Where's the dividing line for you and Margie? She has Liberty Estates.
It's to the north.
To the north.
Yeah, he has Teal. I'm like, you walked it, so he better have it or I'll walk for nothing.
It's actually like eighty and Ninth Avenue, right away across.
Oh, okay, okay, that's the dividing. Gotcha.
See, you had me confused.
It's a row of the electrical lines, basically. It's an east that goes all the way down diagonal.
All right.
So, so, John, to get back to the cost.
Sure.
So, would you say high-end, three, three, two, so you're, so you're eight million?
Ballpark, right.
Now, that, we're not including right-of-way acquisition for engineering costs.
Correct.
So, we're probably, we're, you know, nine million, ten million?
Potentially.
Highness, Keisha.
Potentially, yes.
We did give the proposal for essentially finalizing preliminary engineering and then budgets for putting together contract plans for three different improvements.
Well, that's, that's a very good question.
I just asked, when would it start?
When would it start?
Yes. Phase one.
That we had put together. Essentially, at a timeline of over the next year, we would finalize all of the preliminary engineering. So, determine, you know, exact geometrics for every one of these intersections, confirm all the right-of-way acquisition needed, have a much better feel of utility, any utility issues, relocations. So that, you know, essentially in a year, we'd be sitting here saying, all right, here's all the preferred, or, you know, much better estimates of cost because we've actually, you know, have engineering done as opposed to just concept-level planning. And then at that point, be in a position to move these into final design and right-of-way acquisition, depending on, you know, the town's priority that they place on these three different contracts. So, I'd say maybe best-case scenario, you could be starting construction. If we're sitting here in a year and we start right-of-way acquisition and final design, you design that during twenty-five. You'd be putting it out for bid in the fall, winter of twenty-five with construction proceeding in spring of twenty-six. Assuming you have right-of-way and funding to do so.
All right. Well, here's my, here's my quandary as the president, guys. And believe me, I'm, I'm a hundred percent on board. I trust Trista and Michael impeccably. Margie, this is in your ward, but this is gonna be an RDC project.
Sure.
And they're asking me to sign off on something that I, I've got to have, quite honestly, I gotta have the other four of you completely understanding it and completely supporting it before I start signing the contract that's gonna spend town, town dollars. And where the town dollars are gonna come from for this, you know, do we roll those into the bond issue you were talking about, Michael? Because John and, and Bob have got a project fee. Preliminary engineering task one through ten described above for a not-to-exceed of two-hundred thousand. Then there's two different construction contracts, two-twenty-five, two-twenty-five, and one-fifty. So, am I only signing the document, John, for the two-hundred thousand on PE?
So, originally, I think we talked about just giving a proposal for just the preliminary engineering. And then I know there was a desire to also have budgets and a proposal for final design, so we included all of them in there. I think if you sign that contract, we would only proceed on whatever portions of the design phase that, you know, you guys wanted us to do. So, even move into final engineering for those budgets that are in there, we have to have preferred alternate and a schedule. So, at this point, we're really just looking to finish preliminary engineering over the next, you know, ten to twelve months. And then at that point, move into final engineering, once we get your blessing as to, you know, what are.
How have we paid them, Mike? How have we paid them so far?
Uh, promissory notes. Just kidding. Councilman Pettit, I just want to get an understanding of your purchase policy because I've read what's in the code. I know it's been amended. I just can't find that ordinance somewhere in that other office, you know? Do you not need authority from the full council before, or the full body that's gonna be, the full redevelopment commission, before you sign something like that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to figure out is that, quite honestly, and unfortunately, I'm gonna have to put this on another agenda, and we're gonna have to go through this again, guys, because I've got to have the, all the members comfortable with this before I, I sign a contract as the president.
Good thing is, we can, since we're, it's being videoed, we can kind of bring everybody up to speed and then go have them all.
Well, my, my knee-jerk reaction is so that we don't drag Robinson back through their angies that we, in fact, do do that. You know, Leona and Shawna are gonna have to watch this and understand it, and between you and Michael and Trista, explain this. My goal would be to keep this moving, keep this moving for the residents and for Randy is that we move our RDC meeting to six o'clock next Tuesday. We put this back on the agenda and we, and we vote on this thing along with whatever else needs to be voted on, Joanna, for, for next Tuesday night. Now, we have another workshop next week, ladies, to go through the solar farm. It's out my ward off of Colorado. They want to come in and talk to everyone.
I make a pardon, Mr. President. If you intend to finance that with a bond issue, you could actually act on it next week. If you don't, though, we have to have an identified appropriation and a funding source.
Yep, exactly.
So, I've got to think that through. There's the one exception to this rule, which is the nerd in me. That's what I'm here for. They hired, they said, we need a nerd next, and they hired a nerd. If it's gonna be financed, the bond issue of four out of the five U commissioners, it'll be you now. Vote for this, then you actually can do it before you sell the bond without the appropriations. From one exception in the public works law, that would imply the redevelopment commission as well. Impressed, huh?
All right.
But I just, we need a chance to have a conversation.
Right.
You've identified a lot. I, two-hundred thousand dollars, I am not worried about where I'd find it. It will interfere with your other policies that will have a reserve in CCD. There could be another fund I'm aware of that might have it as well. It's just getting access to it.
Well, we don't pay it upfront either, so there will be time with that.
There'd be, yeah.
And for that matter, an allocation area could be used, provided that we've got all the money we need to pay for the debt service that's pledged there. You could use some of the proceeds that are not, that are not encumbered, basically, or not identified or committed. That could be used to support payments for the preliminary engineering. And still, you could later do a bond issue for the actual construction engineering and the actual construction phase. There's another technique that I want to say out loud here that's lawful but very imaginative that I'd rather have a conversation with Trista about before we spring it on you.
John and Bob, do you need something signed by the RDC to keep going on the preliminary engineering then? Or do you have something? We did the traffic study, right? Didn't I sign the traffic study, Steve?
We had.
We had, but I.
Prior agreement for the study.
Yeah, we, we got it.
That, I believe, timeframe is past, but I mean, we.
If I could back up, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm concerned about the timing if we group all these again together. I mean, you talked about a pretty long timeline there. I still think we should phase this project because we have an immediate need at Ninety-First Avenue. I think that needs to be done no matter what. If we do the other phases or not, that can be done with the existing road structure. If we have an intersection that falls to an F during peak times when the government center lets out, it's gonna continue getting worse and worse, I believe, as we dump more traffic in the area. And so, I really recommend that, no matter what, we phase the first roundabout, if that's what we decide to do, at Ninety-First Avenue, and get that going forthwith.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
What was the bond?
The bond?
Figure on the bond, what was?
The bond figure totally is gonna be eight million dollars, plus or minus.
Eight to ten.
Eight to ten, because of right-of-way.
Just a guess.
What is the interest on that bond?
We don't know. We, we won't know until Bob goes to, till they go to market.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, it came a moment ago, so we can't, could we do, phase one could be the roundabout at Ninety-First, but could it also include the right-of-way acquisitions for the rest of the board, so that's done another way? Would we consider something like that? Not only the, not only the roundabout, but also the right-of-way acquisition needed for what we need for the rest of the board? Could we do that?
I'll see why, I mean.
I mean, if we keep it, if we keep the whole project.
Well, and, and remember, Steve, we did that, and I think you might have still been with Robinson. We did that on Mississippi Street, phase, what I call phase four. And we broke it out, but you guys, we bought the whole right-of-way, all the way down to Bill Sanders' area. So, that could be done, yeah.
Oh, and right-of-way is a time to sort of process, too.
That's exactly.
I, I think that's a great idea, I'd ask you, it's too.
Which it does take a long time, especially if you have, which, right? But this would give us the opportunity to not only get that done, but to keep the rest of it moving.
Yeah. All right. Let me talk to Angie and, and Michael and Trista and, and figure out if we want to do this, not do this whole thing again next Tuesday, but do we want to have an agenda item?
I think between now and then, we asked them to watch the video that Craig.
Yeah, we have to have them watch the video and even Margie to get caught up to speed. Again, I, I stress it.
What meeting was this?
This was a RDC workshop.
Oh, the workshop?
At five-thirty. You should have, yeah.
No, it was six-fifteen.
Six-fifteen's a public meeting, which I'm gonna call here in a minute.
That's what I got in my deck.
Yeah.
John, can I add?
Yeah, Randy.
If I could add some color that, that may or may not assist the town in, in how they want to, if they want to move forward, how they want to allocate this. And then it'll also help, help Arch, but, Arch, again, Randy Paul, Liberty Estates.
Good to see you.
Pleasure. To the extent we can identify or make it part of our decision tree, if it's important to you, to nail down the location of this north roundabout, again, assuming you want to move forward with it. My phase six runs right here. And from a timing standpoint, at Liberty, we would like to move forward with that phase six in the next six-plus months physically. I've got engineering on hold, obviously. We've got a bigger decision here in front of the town. At Liberty, we're willing to work with you on the land, give up and everything else to make this happen. We're also in the process of picking up approximately two-hundred acres on the west side, which doubles the controlled land here for us all to discuss. And the opportunity in that, especially when it comes down to prioritizing, is payback. What are you putting money in? What's it gonna give back to the town? Well, I think that we're already proving as a town partner that we step forward with our own money, even when the economy stumbles. And we put all our roads in, we put in the private money to fund the bond and everything. Well, what we're suggesting is, we have an opportunity to look at a four-hundred-acre parcel here tied in with your investment. Public-private investment again. And we could not have done Liberty, by the way, without the town's initial assistance. So, you know, we're here and, and, and very appreciative. But to the extent as part of whatever facet you want to approve with Robinson, if we could work with Robinson and you could approve Robinson to work with us to not necessarily improve, but do the engineering to locate this, it would allow us to keep moving forward. We could, you know, we've already planned to give up some of the land, you know, to make that work. Our concept is to move this up a little higher so that it can feed this two-hundred acres to the west. And if you can imagine something similar to what we've already approved on the east being on the west, the opportunity is to do the roads correctly the first time, to plan for the flow. But also, we want to think a little bit out of the box, and again, this isn't just my thinking, but some feedback from some of the principals of the town. You know, allocate some land to do substations, whether it's police, fire, service and such, in this new quarter that we're picking up. So, we're actually working public privately together to put all the planned infrastructure in phases. Not all upfront dollars, but the planning needs to be like this so that the town could have its substation-localized ability to service a larger, call it a super-regional residential mixed area for the town. It could involve something like taking the prior park that we talked about down over here of ten acres that we've already committed and maybe put it together and give you a twenty-acre Central Park in the town. Now, you could do sporting events, whatever, whatever you see the future. So, we have some great ideas we'd like to bring to the table. I bounced some of them off. Sean has, has been very quick to make sure that he knows that I must participate financially in this. This is a public-private participation. But the win-win here is fantastic. My only point for coming up again, given what Robinson needs to accomplish to move forward, is to ask, whatever you approve with them, that they can at least do the planning for this. And then when you talk about your priorities, we would like to just give you some feedback on if you do decide to move forward with the two roundabouts of the street, three lanes going forward and all. We're here to make sure it's a success and invest into the infrastructure and land and vertical. and vertical that makes it pay back faster. So we have a lot of great ideas. Obviously, I don't think that you want me to lay them out, but I want you to know we're here. That's why we're here and we're very excited to be part of that.
What was your idea on the two roundabouts? Where did you plan on putting them?
I, I, if I can defer, he's, he's, he can, uh, put these back up for you.
Sure. So this is the overall, excuse me, this is the overall project here that we were looking at conceptually. And you've got an intersection at Ninety-first and Chase Town here, and we're considering, you know, proposing a roundabout here. There's the entrance to Liberty Estates, which is what we were just zoomed in on further north up here. And then also there was, uh, proposed improvements to soften these curves through here. So the north roundabout zoomed in is here, which is what was just on screen with this is the Liberty Estates. The softened curve in between the two would be, right now, these curves are so tight, it's very low design speed. We sort of soften those so it's safer to travel through that section. And then the south intersection right here by the courthouse.
What did he plan on doing with that curve? You know, they call it the dead-end curve.
Can you see those here?
Yeah.
So that's the, the new part. So already, if you recall, our commitment, we removed all these trees, so the visibility now is fantastic. Okay, but that was just step one. We were going to, and, and we've committed to, but I think that you're probably gonna move past this, putting kind of a flashing, um, pedestrian crossing to get to this.
Sure.
But i- if this new plan is something the town wants to do, that would all run through that roundabout, which would be extremely safe and functional. And then the smoothing is part of what Robinson is proposing to the town to smooth out these two turns, which allows for a better safety, better traffic flow, et cetera.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, guys. Uh, we got a lot to digest and I've gotta get to an RDC meeting here to get some bills paid. So, um, with that being said, um, anything else real quick? Otherwise, I'm gonna, Craig, you ready?
Yes.
All right. Um, I'm gonna go ahead, call the redevelopment commission special meeting to order for Tuesday, March nineteenth at six twenty PM. Uh, Ms. Chilcot, will you take the roll call in absence of the, well, are you the secretary?
I am.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hardaway's the secretary. Never mind, Angie.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call. Uh, Ms. Shawna Haynes Edwards is not here. Ms. Chandler Felton is not here. Ms. Uszalak?
Here.
President Pettit?
I'm here.
P P. Hey, Councilwoman Hardaway.
All right, three members. We have a quorum. Consent agenda is the accounts payable, registered voucher approval for March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Ladies, being members of the council, if you will recall, we had a claims list at the last council meeting that included several, uh, Mississippi Street TIF allocation areas, uh, primarily. Uh, Trista, we had set this up last year. Trista Hudson is here from, uh, Sender and Associates. We had set this up where the Mississippi Street TIF allocation area was gonna buy, uh, police vehicles and some other, uh, items, uh, that need to be paid, uh, and the RDC needs to approve those, not necessarily the council. Is that correct, Mr. Griffin?
That is absolutely correct, Mr. President.
All right.
Okay, so moved.
Motion by Mrs. Uszalak.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hardaway. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Uh, old business, uh, briefly, we had a quick, well, not really a quick, but we had a count, uh, redevelopment commission workshop on the Whitcomb Street corridor. Uh, more, uh, discussion to follow on that. I don't believe there's any new businesses there, Angie?
No.
No? All right. Uh, under general orders, um, there is resolution twenty-four dash oh three, reviving, uh, revising some portions of a prior resolution of the redevelopment commission, ratifying and affirming the instructions set forth in a memorandum of the interim town manager related to fund stewardship, ratifying resolution twenty-four oh one. Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, members of the commission, uh, as you recall, during the absence of Trista, uh, Mr. Sender, young Mr. Sender, had assisted with us trying to identify certain uses for the allocation areas that had been approved in the budget process that needed transition to the clerk treasurer's office. During that same time, I'd identified a couple of funds that I thought were vestigial funds. I had learned later on that they were not vestigial funds and in fact, they were allocation areas. You had had, prepared for you at a prior meeting, a resolution that was given, instruction based on that wrong assumption. This corrects those assumptions, makes all the corrections necessary, ratifies the corrections that we now needed to get into books. And once you do this, you're going to assuage the bookkeeper in the clerk treasurer's office beyond words. So wait, in a little more...
I was gonna ask, in layman's terms, Michael, what's a, what's a, what did you use? Assuade?
Swage.
Assuade?
Very anxious about, wait, we have to put money back in.
I'm too old to look up definitions, Mr. Bell.
The fieldhouse allocation area is a real one. Money had to go back in there. This will accomplish that. It will also, uh, also reinforce something else that you said in that first resolution, which I cannot summon right now. But basically, it corrects for the mistaken assumptions in the one resolution and affirms the correct resolution assumptions and gives the proper instruction to the clerk treasurer's office to allow, we've just read the report, she's already done it, so you really do have to pass this. So she's gonna, she's gonna call me tomorrow and not be happy. She will not, I mean, happy is a sense of being anxious, needing a pill, eating ginseng tea.
Michael, Trista, do you have a comment?
I have a question.
Originally, we thought, and I may answer this for you, um, Ms. Uszalak, thank you just a moment. Originally, we thought that the fieldhouse was not a true allocation area. Um, and so the original resolution you had was trying to, um...
Address that.
Address that and allow everything to be paid from the Ameriflex. In fact, though, Bob Swans has confirmed the fieldhouse allocation area is separate.
Yes.
So the original money that was moved out of that, out of the mistake, needs to be put back. And then the expenses that you see there in number three need to be paid from the Ameriflex, uh, allocation area right now. It was budgeted, though, for those expenses to be in Mississippi Street, which, uh, my, uh, compadre did not realize while I was out, uh, in recovery. So going forward, uh, we will have a resolution for you to confirm the payable money is actually instead being paid from Mississippi Street, not maybe moving money back and forth, but going forward, being paid from Mississippi Street where it was originally planned.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. That was my question regarding the fieldhouse.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any further discussion amongst members? Questions?
No.
None.
Seeing none? Uh, good evening, Shawna.
Good evening.
Let the record show, uh, Commissioner Hayes Edwards joined us. Um, and was there a motion? I'm sorry.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uszalak, seconded by Ms. Hardaway to approve resolution twenty-four dash oh three. Shawna, I apologize. I don't know if you want to, uh, vote on this since you're stepping in now. Uh, this is the only, we're in general orders under the redevelopment commission meeting.
Okay.
Uh, we previously approved the consent agenda. If you'll recall, at the last council meeting, we had the, uh, the conflict, um, on some of the items on the claims list that needed to be paid, uh, by the RDC through the allocation area. So, uh, I will leave that up to you as, uh, Ms. Hardaway takes a roll call on resolution twenty-four oh three.
That's right.
Roll call vote. Uh, Mrs. Shawna Haynes Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Marge Uszalak?
Yes.
Mr. Sean Pettit?
Yes.
And Keisha Hardaway is a yes.
All right, four yeses. Motion passes. Uh, one item, Shawna, for you. Uh, the boards that you see up, we had the count, the redevelopment commission workshop. Uh, we discussed the Whitcomb Street corridor, which is actually, uh, some of it's in Margie's ward, some of it's in Rick's ward, uh, as to what we want to do. Craig has videotaped the presentation that Bob Sannie and John from Robinson made. Uh, would strongly encourage you, if you have any questions, uh, you can call me, you can call Rick, Michael or Angie, uh, on what we discussed. Uh, Randy Hall is here, uh, with Luxor Homes, Liberty Estates. Um, and we need to try and make a decision as to how to direct Robinson to move forward on this corridor improvement. So I would encourage you and Leona to, um, try and watch the video or sit with Angie or Michael, uh, kind of go through some of these, uh, these maps and these improvements. Obviously, Bob is, is more than welcome to, um, and Steve. Steve's back there. I see you, Steve.
I'm still here.
Uh, ask, ask any questions about that because at some point, either next Tuesday or in the very near future, we're gonna have to take some action and make some decisions on how to instruct Robinson to proceed, uh, with this on preliminary engineering, how are we gonna pay for it? Uh, basically ballpark, we're looking at between eight and ten million dollars on this corridor from US thirty, meandering what we call the backroads to the county and coming back down by that roundabout that's in Crown Point. Uh, it would make that whole corridor connect. And Randy has got the thousand-plus units in Liberty on the east side of what would be the Whitcomb Street corridor. So, um, lots to digest. I know I threw a lot at you in a, in a little bit of time, uh, but I know that a president's got a plan commission meeting that's two minutes late, so...
Okay.
So Chair, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four, we are out. Thank you, ladies.